All right, good evening, everyone. It's 6:00 PM posted time at today's meeting of January sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. At this time, I'll call it a meeting of the Cleveland County Board of Commissioners to order. Madam Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, sir, we have a quorum.
Next item we'll take care of is the Pledge of Allegiance and Invocation tonight. That'll be led by Commissioner Whitstone.
Let us pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Now, let us pray. Good gracious, heavenly Father, we love you and we thank you for this great day you've given us. We thank you for this opportunity to be here tonight to do the county's business and we pray that you will lead and guide us and help us to have the understanding to make the right decisions as we move along tonight. We also pray that you will touch our first responders, our police, our EMS, and everyone that works here in the county that helps make this county a great county to live in. We pray all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Next, we'll recognize any elected officials present tonight. Any veterans present?
David Cotten, U.S. Army.
Linda Lane, United States Marine Corps.
David Cotten, United States Navy.
Johnny Hudson, U.S. Army. Has all of you got one of our veteran pens? Okay, thank you.
Next item, we'll recognize any law enforcement present.
Danny Howard, Public and Sheriff's Office.
Gary Hader, State Highway Patrol.
And last, we'll recognize Indian County Department heads.
Carrie Melvin, Assistant County Manager.
Rebecca Johnson, Interim Director of DSS.
All right, Commissioners, before you have the motion for tonight's, or you have the agenda for tonight's meeting, at this time, do we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Or are there any additions to the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
A motion second to approve the motion, uh, agenda as presented, all in favor will say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next item is early business. At this time, we need to swear in Commissioner Harding for the Kataba Indian Nation Foundation Board of Directors. Madam Clerk. You're welcome to say a few words if you'd like to.
Do you, Deb Harden, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States? Do you, Deb Harden, solemnly swear that you will be faithful and bear to your allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established from the covenant thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of this state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States? Do you, Deb Harden, solemnly swear that you will well and truly execute the duties of your office as members of the Indian Nation Foundation Board of Directors according to the facts of your skill, ability, and acquaintance of law, so that you may go on? Admit it. Congratulations.
Does she have, what, a two-page speech?
Uh, no, just, um, the only thing I would say is it was a surprise when I got the call. And I'm honored to serve and I can't wait for us to get started to see how it goes.
Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you.
So, sorry about that, this was an appointment by the governor, correct?
Right.
All right, next item is special recognition. At this time, I'll recognize Commissioner Hutchins. He's going to recognize the Kings Mountain Volleyball Championship Team.
Okay. I guess I'm very proud because my granddaughter plays on it. And you girls can start coming toward the front if you want to and coaches or whoever. And it's a Kings Mountain volleyball team and they've won thirty-four and won overall for the season. They are fourteen and oh in the conference. And this is the first year in, what, six or seven years that y'all have won the state champion?
Twenty-one.
Oh, the first in twenty, the first twenty years that they've won the state champion. And these girls have really played hard and they've done good. And I will let the coach start and she can introduce them going down the aisle.
All right, so, um, this is Kent Coach Lindsay Ellis. This is Jesse Osborn, Senior, Sophomore, Abigail Hedgepath, Sophomore, Ruby Osborne. Osborne. Junior, Alexa Jones, Senior, Meli Sivalia, Senior, Mary Grace Hoag, Junior, London Brown, Sophomore, Ava Tipton, Sophomore, Sarah Bouchard, Assistant Coach, Lincoln Hammer, and Assistant Coach, Michael Pop.
You know, one, one thing about it, they played the championship state championship game in Raleigh. And there was more people from Kings Mountain there than Orange County. And it was only about thirty to forty minutes down the road and we probably outnumbered them, what, two to three to one? And it was very surprising that as many people went along there. And over the years, I've enjoyed watching volleyball. I, I can smack it, I can go. But they won't let me get on the court, though. But appreciate you girls. And we got a proclamation that the clerk's going to read for you.
Kings Mountain High School NCHSA A three A volleyball championship. Whereas Cleveland County is proud to be home to Kings Mountain High School. And whereas Kings Mountain High School Girls Volleyball Team, the Lady Mountaineers, through hard work and perseverance over thirty-five hard-fought games achieved the NCHSA A three A volleyball state championship. As the Lady Mountaineers take great pride in respecting their opponents and playing the game of volleyball with class and dignity. And whereas the demanding athletic competition requires the highest levels of skills, determination, teamwork, and focus on selfless commitment to others. Whereas these sixteen outstanding high school players, Jesse Osborn, Camden Pacehour, Maddie Broome, Alexa Jones, Kinsley Morris, Ava Tipton, Miracle Davis, Meli Songala? Abigail Hedgepath, London Brown, Ruby Osborne, Sarah Bouchard, Mary Grace Hoag, and Chesney Gibson have represented themselves, their families, their school, and their community proudly. Now, therefore, be it reserved, be it resolved, that the Cleveland County Board of Commissioners hereby commends, congratulates, and gives special recognition to the Kings Mountain Volleyball High School Team for the extraordinary achievement of its two thousand and twenty-three state volleyball championship. Adopted this the sixteenth day of January, two thousand and twenty-four.
One thing, too, this ought to be a tough thing. How many seniors do we have in this group? Four? So they're not going to lose many players, so they should have a strong team again next year.
Johnny, you want to present that?
Yeah. We're all going down.
We'll stand behind them. And you go hide the seat down there. Thank you so much. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you all, congratulations.
Congratulations.
All right, next item on the agenda is public comment, Madam Clerk.
The public comment portion of a Board of Commissioners meeting is an opportunity for persons wishing to appear before the Board to do so. Citizen speakers will be acknowledged in the order in which they signed up to speak and will address all comments to the Board as a whole and not one individual commissioner. Speakers will address the Board from the speaker's podium at the front of the room and will begin their remarks by stating their name and address. Discussions between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Public comment is not intended to require the Board to answer any impromptu questions. Speakers are expected to be civil in their language and presentation and are prohibited from using profanity or making threats of violence or personal attacks against any person. All comments from the speaker shall be issue-oriented and directly related to a subject matter that the Commissioners have oversight and authority. Each speaker is allotted three minutes to address the Board. A speaker is not permitted to share, reserve, or relinquish any remaining time allotted to them to another speaker. Any comments where their primary purpose is to promote a business or candidacy shall not be allowed.
All right, first we have Robert Williams.
My name is Robert Williams. I live at eight fourteen East Hates Coast Trail. That's a long del address and I live in Foster. I've got two things I want to mention tonight. One of them is this Kataba Nation Foundation Board of Directors appointment. We just swore in, Deb. I didn't realize she was a Kataba Indian. I asked her before the meeting about that. But anyway, the Kataba Nation is not in Cleveland County. The Kataba Nation is not in North Carolina. The Kataba Nation by federal law is a separate national entity. The only thing that relates to Cleveland County is the casino. We've had a lot of problems with the casino. So I don't understand why in the world we would ever want to get involved with being associated with the Kataba Nation Foundation Board of Directors. That's their business. They've got debts and settlements that they're going to have to make and I don't know just what we've agreed to do to be in there. And I'll talk, I'll write an article about more, more about that because I've got some other things I want to say and I'm a slow talker, so I run out of time pretty quick. The next item I want to talk about is the consent agenda that's coming up. I reviewed some of the things about the finance department. And I was looking through some information about taxes that had been collected and also taxes that had not been collected. And you had, you had a history of ten years. What I noticed was, last year, we've had an exponential increase in uncollected taxes for the year two thousand and twenty-three. My first question is why? It's going to come up on the agenda, just next item. Maybe you guys will talk about it. I know the consent agenda, you usually don't discuss anything, you just vote, one vote, it's done with. But I was concerned about that. My thinking is, the way that we send out tax bills and the way it's paid, I know when I get my tax bill, there's no incentive to pay it early. Not a real incentive, this is a little bit knocked off, but not enough to make me decide to do that. I wait till the last minute, apparently a lot of people do, too. But I pay it. All of a sudden, a lot of people apparently are not paying it. And I'm just wondering why and what are we going to do? And maybe we ought to think about alternate methods of collection. Perhaps a monthly basis. I know taxes go up, I know other places in North Carolina do that. Especially around places like Lake Norman. They had, they, they collect so much a month and it makes it easier for some people to pay. So my time's out, but I wish you'd think about that.
Thank you. Next item, our next person to speak is Linda Lane.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'd just like to be here as a constituent. A lot of times when I was in the Marine Corps, you never heard anything good about yourself until you were fixing to leave or, you know, got stationed somewhere else or retire. I'd like to say, Commissioner Bridges, I'm so happy that Chesney made the volleyball team. And not only is she a good volleyball player, but she's an awesome future farmer. And I'd like to also thank Greg Trewick for helping farmers in the county get the grants they need and deserve. And hopefully Ag will stay one of those big things in Cleveland County and the state of North Carolina. Commissioner Whitstein, I don't actually know you personally, but I see you a lot. And I just know that Ouija Withers is still happy about the house she built for her so long ago, just so you know. Commissioner Hutchins, we've only spoke briefly, I mean, so briefly, but it just dawned on me that John Ahore must have been named after you. Ms. Harden, Commissioner Harden, ma'am, my son liked that you had allowed me to foster one of your dogs. That Anatola that stood up was two feet taller than my mom. My son decided when he got out of the Navy to rescue a dog and he's got a blue-tit coonhound that can jump that high now. But thank you again. Commissioner Gordon, I'm saving you, the chairman, for last. I share with you the pain of losing a parent and I lost mine within ten months of each other. So, and mine was right after a birthday, my birthday. But prayers for you and your family as you move through this. Mr. Cotton, go Navy. But thank you again and I hope other constituents actually get to come here and thank you personally for the things you've done for the county. Appreciate it.
Ms. Lane, what's your address?
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. Two-two-three Range Road. But I also used to own three fifty Range Road that's going to be on the thing today. What a fluke.
Thank you for your comments. Next item is the consent agenda. Commissioners, you have been presented the consent agenda. You've had opportunity to review that in your pocket. So at this time, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda as moved, as written.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? If not, all in favor will say aye. Anybody opposed will say no. All right, motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is the cooperative extension, North Carolina State Memorandum of Agreement.
It's a public hearing that was part of the...
Oh, I'm sorry.
After the public hearing has been opened, citizen...
Wait, wait, wait just a second. It's not always on here. All right, go ahead.
After the public hearing has been opened, citizen speakers will be acknowledged in the order in which they signed up to speak and will address all comments to the Board as a whole and not one individual commissioner. Speakers will address the Board from the speaker's podium at the front of the room and will begin their remarks by stating their true name and address. Discussions between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. A public hearing is not intended to require the Board to answer any impromptu questions. Speakers are expected to be civil in their language and presentation. All comments from the speaker shall be directly related to the subject of the public hearing. Each speaker is allotted five minutes to address the Board. A speaker is not permitted to share, reserve, or relinquish any remaining time allotted to them to another speaker.
All right, so at this time, we'll recognize Chris Martin. Chris is going to come forward and present case, Plan B, case twenty-three dash twenty-six.
Good evening, Board. Thank you.
Let me read this. So this is, you're going to do the Plato Lee case first, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so the first piece, and then we have a public hearing to follow, twenty-three dash twenty-six is a request to rezone property on Plato Lee Road from general business to residential, to residential, general business and residential to light industri- industrial.
Thank you, Chairman.
All right, sorry, sir.
We've got two requests for each tonight. Both of them request to change the zoning map. The first comes from property owners Barry Beaver, Michael Milton, and Vicky Milton. And together, they own seven different parcels totaling fifty-eight acres. And they're asking to rezone those parcels from residential and general business to light industrial. The current zoning districts of general business and residential, you can think of the general business as the district that accommodates all of your retail and professional service uses. And normally, those districts are located on your arterial streets. And your residential districts, the residential district is your traditional-style single-family district that allows single-family homes and multifamily uses. And they're asking to change that to light industrial. And that requested district accommodates your light manufacturing, warehousing, distribution, and service activities. This area is located along Plato Lee Road. And you can see, we have the seven parcels highlighted. The red represents the general business parcels while the white represents the residential parcels. And an aerial of the photo, or aerial of the area showing the existing uses. Currently, there are two different businesses on these tracts of land. The first being Mako, which is a metal fabrication business, serving a lot of industries in the region. And the second is Servo South, being a motor repair shop, also serving a lot of regional industries. And again, it's located along Plato Lee Road and then touching RT, RT Road. This area is mostly what I'd call residential, single-family dwelling. These businesses have been there before zoning was adopted in this area. So they predated countywide zoning. And then, a little bit, little to the north, you'll run into Washburn Switch Road, which, which has a lot of other similar uses, a lot of industrial uses along Washburn Switch Road. Our land use plan calls these specific parcels secondary growth, which is more of a residential-style vision for this area. But you can see that orange color representing the primary growth, which is more industrial in nature. And that extends up to Washburn Switch Road. So while this, while these parcels, they sit in that secondary growth, they're really near that arbitrary line between the secondary growth and primary growth. We presented this case to the planning board and they recommend approval. And they noted that it complies, that the existing uses on the property comply with the district that they're asking for. And they also pointed out that proximity to the other industrial uses along Washburn Switch Road. And then also the primary growth industrial area. So they recommended approval. And action tonight is to hold a public hearing and then you may approve or deny the request. And I can answer any questions.
Does anybody from the board have questions for, for Chris before we open the public hearing? All right, here and now, at this time, I'll declare the public hearing open. This is for Plan B, case twenty-three dash twenty-six. It's a request to rezone property on Plato Lee Road from general business and residential to light industry. So we've had one, so Mr. Williams?
I've spoken a lot of times in these public hearings. And the way, the way you have it now, if you want to speak, if you think you might want to speak, if you don't know anything about it and need to learn about it, you got to sign up first to speak. So most time I sign up, but I usually have something, some comment that I want to make. And my comment here is, I predate countywide zoning, too. I remember how all this came about. And it wasn't very kosher, I would say. But it is what it is. But it seems like we've got, just like this parcel right here and the next one, too. We've got all kind of mixed stuff all around. And to go from general business and residential is one district altogether. I mean, or one zoning title. Appears to me like general business and residential should be separate to start with. This light industrial, uh, there's other businesses around that are almost the same, it appears to be. So it just, it just looks to me like it's unnecessarily complicated. We've got a jumble anyway, so it doesn't hardly make any difference what you zone it as. You can do anything you want to with the property. So it's just more time and effort going through. And we've got a whole bureaucracy in, in the planning and zoning now. And we've got so many properties like this that it's just all mixed together. The planning zone voted unanimously to approve it. I don't know what else to do but approve it. So my recommendation would be approve it. And try to do better in the future. Thank you.
Chris, you want to come back up? Board, at this time, we'll close the public hearing. Questions and discussion by the board? Is there any other questions you might have for, is the petitioner here? Gary?
Yes, sir.
In case you have questions on him as well?
No question, but I, I feel like it's compatible and if we want to allow these businesses to grow, we should consider approving it.
We can talk about predating or whatever and look back and always try to blame somebody for what's happened. But to me, this is just one of the pieces that got in there that wasn't quite right. And we can make it right tonight. So unless there's somebody else that wants to talk before we make, I'll make a motion that we, uh, we accept the petition.
I'll second it. All right, we have a motion second to approve, uh, the rezone in Plan B, case twenty-three dash twenty-six. Are there any other questions or discussion? All right, if not, all in favor will say aye. Those opposed will say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is Plan B, case twenty-three dash twenty-seven. This is a request to rezone property at three, at thirty-five zero five Foster Road from rural agriculture to residential. Chris?
Our next item is also a request to change zoning map. The petitioner is Nicole Helms. She's asking to change one parcel, about one acre, from rural ag zoning district to the residential zoning district. And the difference between these two districts is both uses and the lot standards. The rural ag allows for a lot of commercial, non-residential uses along with residential. And it requires a three-acre minimum lot size. While the residential zoning district requires or allows mainly residential uses, but it allows half-acre minimum lot size. So you've got use difference and lot size difference between these two districts. Parcel that she's interested in is located on Highway eighteen Foster Road, north of Shelby, between Shelby and Foster, at the intersection of Dick Spangler Road and Foster Road. And you can see that we've got it highlighted in, in black there. The green color represents the three-acre rural ag district and the white color represents the half-acre residential district. And she's asking to be changed essentially from green to white. This area along eighteen, here's an aerial photo. It's showing some, you know, really a mixed use in this area along the highway. You'll, you'll find single-family dwellings. And then you'll find some commercial along the highway as well, like the convenience store and the gas station across the road. The land use plan, the vision for this area shows it as being future secondary growth. And that, the language in that, that designation talks about residential in nature with your business uses being located along highways and intersections. And that, the language in that, that designation talks about residential in nature with your business uses being located along highways and intersections. We presented this case to the planning office, or excuse me, the planning board, and they also recommended approval for this one as well. And they noted that it would be essentially expanding a residential district to cover that one acre lot, that it was consistent with the land use plan and that the residential zoning district, the requested district, seemed compatible with the uses that you'll find in that area. So they recommended approval. This one would also require a public hearing and then after the public hearing, the commissioners can approve or deny the request. And I'll answer any questions.
If I have any questions before we open the public hearing?
All right, you, you said that this is a one-acre lot only?
The, the parcel that they're asking for is one acre.
Okay.
That's correct.
Anyone else? All right, so this time we'll declare the public hearing open and this is for planning case twenty-three dash twenty-seven. It's a request to rezone property at three, thirty-five zero five Foster Road from rural agriculture to residential. So with the public hearing open, we have one that's signed up to, one person signed up to speak. Mr. Williams?
Well, again, I had to sign up before I heard anything, any presentation, just to be able to have the opportunity to speak. And I was glad I heard a comment a while ago that, that something was wrong and was going to be made right. On the other one, I'm just wondering what's been made right. This particular one is a good example of that. I remember back before we had any zoning, the first zoning we had, how it came about in this three-acre lot deal. And it's made a lot of people mad over the ages and a lot of people have been mad about it recently. And I remember this room full of people that had complaints about years ago, they had to have three-acre lots and all of a sudden somebody wanted to come in and take that situation and put a bunch of trailers or small homes or whatever in a high-density area. And, and the commissioners voted, voted against it. The people spoke and they voted against it, which was good. This particular situation, I don't know, this is another thing that in both of these situations, there's been no mention about what's going to be put on that property. Why are you zoning to start with? This one in particular, from, from agriculture or whatever to residential, one house is, one, one property next door is residential and over here it's agricultural. And this particular lot, I drove by it today when I came down here and looked it over good. I knew exactly where it was and looked at it and it could be anything from a big garden to, to the stuff that's around it, just little garages and this, that, and the other, just all mixed together. So, yeah. You know, the, the board, the zoning board recommended approval again, and I don't know what you can do about it. I don't think there's any right that's ever going to be put to these people that had their property years ago. They wanted to, had a farm and wanted to cut out a part of the farm for their kids to build a house and, and I think somebody had a nice house somewhere and somebody wanted to put a trailer park next to it. And that's where all this stuff came about to start with, this three-acre deal. I don't know how you're going to ever cure that. It's a problem. But in this particular situation, we got what we want, what we have. I mean, it is like it is, so I suspect you're going to approve it and I don't, I would, I would approve it too if I was in your case situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris, you want to come back up? All right, at this time, the public hearing is now closed. Do you have any questions or discussion before we ask for a motion? Chris, you have anything you need to add?
I don't, sir.
This is on eighteen where a lot of the places did not comply with RA and we, we went back and changed several. I mean, that were there that we had to change back to residential because of the property around it.
Yeah, yes, we've had, actually, we've had several cases along Highway eighteen between Shelby and Foster with a similar request.
Or just, this is just south of, this is just south of Los.
Yeah, my, my question is, the way it is zoned now, it'd have to be rezoned to build a house on it for a one-acre lot. Is that correct?
No, the, the property can be used as it's, as it lies with the zoning district that it's in, in the RA. Because that one-acre parcel was created before a zoning district was applied to it. So that parcel is essentially grandfathered in and can be used. It can be used for the uses in RA. Now, if someone wishes to subdivide that parcel into two half-acre tracks, they would have to move out of the RA and into a district that allows half-acre. And that's, that's, that would be the background of this request.
I know we've had a couple of cases along there at eighteen where they wanted to build another house on the property, but they had to go back and rezone it to be able to do it for the family.
Yes, sir. That's, we've had a similar request as this one tonight along the same highway.
No other questions? I'll make a motion that we approve it.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve, a second, we have a motion seconded to approve request to rezone property thirty-five zero five Foster Road. All is, are any questions or discussion before we call for the question? Here none, all in favor will say aye. Anyone opposed? All right, motion carries unanimous. Now we're down to board appointments. The first board appointment is the Adult Care Home Advisory Committee, Madam Court?
Our commission.
Yes, we, you have the list of applicants in front of you. At this time, you will need to appoint two people to serve an initial one-year term ending January first, 2025.
I'd like to nominate Phyllis Williams and Derek Chambers.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion to approve, to nominate, or nominate the two names mentioned. All in this favor will say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, next board is the Nursing Home Advisory Committee.
You will need to appoint three people for a three-year term set to expire June thirtieth, 2026.
I would like to nominate Linda Putnam, Elaine Champion, and Donna Buies. Buies, is that right? Buies?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for the three names listed. All in this favor will say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, motion carries unanimous. Next one is the Veterans Advisory Council.
You will need to appoint five people to serve a three-year term ending June thirtieth, 2026. Again, for this board, the seats have to be vetted and have to serve certain criteria. So with the list of applicants, they have been recommended and vetted by the Advisory Council Chair and Veteran Service Officer.
I'd like to nominate Valerie McCoy, Julie Crox, Marion Pine, Rick Olaf, Joseph Collins.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion seconded to appoint the five names listed. Is there any other discussion? If not, all in this favor will say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Right, that motion carries unanimous.
Thank you.
We passed all of them, right?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Commissioners, do you have anything to report before we close the meeting? David Staff, you guys got anything? All right, well, that brings us to the end of the agenda. Before we ask for adjournment, make sure that we mention everybody, the board of commissioners will meet again on February, Tuesday, February the sixth, 2024, six P.M. here in the Commissioners' chambers. With that, I ask for a motion to adjourn.
Is that moved?
Do we have a second?
Second.